Was he leaving, Carol?
It's good to sneak a, sneak a game like that.
That's what Draymond's doing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, have to, have to gang that.
Soon as, soon as.
Crazy.
Delta, Delta has a red eye.
Well, we've not.
When I go to Tennessee, we take that.
I will, so.
We use it midnight, get there.
Any Tuesday.
Five, six in the morning. But we fly into, yeah, fly into Atlanta and rent a car and come back. It's about two hours. Well, somewhere I go, Chattanooga.
You can do five days, just avoid, just avoid Monday, Monday's your death. Which one, the one over here? Yeah, yeah, you do.
Which is, which is.
Yeah, I know, I, yeah, coming up tonight.
All they use is the federal tax.
Understood.
And how much cost the registered car?
All right, everyone, at six o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting to order. And I'll start by asking us all to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Hilton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, then remain standing for our invocation.
Good evening, everybody. I always want to say thank you to the council for the privilege of being able to address you during council meetings and pray for the meetings and pray for our city as well, that we all love and we all care for. A wise old man told me when I first became a pastor, I won't tell you how long ago. He said, listen to the bleeding of the sheep. And little did I know how valuable that advice would be. And I think it's a great form of advice, not just for shepherds of churches, but for shepherds of communities. And your task has been to govern and watch over the community's needs and meet those needs in the best way that you possibly can. Sometimes the bleeding of the sheep will help you identify those needs so that you can be wise in the decisions you make to meet those needs. I encourage you to listen to the bleeding of the sheep. There's a wise old proverb out of the Jewish scriptures that says, a wise man or woman, a wise man scales the walls of the cities and they look out. And that's the task that you're called to, look and see, where is the city? Where are we doing? How can we make the decisions that are needed to be made in the best interest of our community? The constituents and the leadership working together on that. So, thank you for being and seeking wisdom and counsel in all that you do. And we appreciate from our standpoint that you are trying to govern as best possible, in the best possible way, our community. So with that, may I offer a word of prayer before we begin? Let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, thank you so much for the opportunity to serve, whether it be in the church, whether it be in the community, in one way or the other. Ask for wisdom. There are so many issues, so many possibilities and so many possibilities for bottlenecks. I pray that you will give wisdom to this council and to the citizens of our communities. We work together to bring greatness and goodness to our city. Lord, I'm also reminded as we approach National Police Week that you will always be with our first responders. And this May, when we remember that time for officers and what they have endured and what they have, some have died for during National Police Memorial Week, I pray that you will always keep our officers safe, bring them home safely from each of their watch. And all of our first responders, fire and EMTs, that, all of our first responders, God, we trust them into your hands and we pray a hedge of protection around them and our community. In Christ's name we pray, amen and amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Welcome to all the members of the public who are here. I'd like to remind you all, if anybody is planning to speak on any item on or off the agenda, to please fill out a speaker card and hand it to our city clerk so that we can plan appropriately for all those who wish to, to speak. And also, as your item comes up, to please come and sit in this front row where we're reserving seats, seats for people who want to speak on agenda items. All right, item three, city clerk's report on posting the agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agenda was posted on April 28th, 2022 at 2:30 PM.
Thank you, and roll call.
Councilmember Almaderas.
Here.
Councilmember Bracco. Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz. Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Tovar.
Here.
And Mayor Blankley.
Here. All right, item 1.3, sorry, 1.2, Orders of the Day, we have nothing there. 1.3, Employee Introductions, we have nothing there. Item two, 2.1 is Proclamations, Awards and Presentations, we have two items there. I'm going to start with a proclamation for Bike Awareness Month. And I'm going to read, whereas the City of Gilroy joins cities and counties throughout the country in promoting May as National Bike Month and the 20th of May, 2022, as Gilroy Bike to Wherever Day. And whereas Gilroy acknowledges that walking and bicycling are transportation modes that promote healthy living, alleviates traffic and parking congestion, reduces air pollution and decreases fuel consumption. And whereas both National Bike Month and Bike to Wherever Day are effective in converting drivers into bicyclists and educating citizens about the environmental importance of walking and biking to school or work regularly. And whereas Gilroy's efforts to promote Bike to Wherever Day 2022 include an Energizer station at the Christmas Hill Park, staffed by the Parks and Recreation Commission and volunteers, and I know our chair, oh, there she is, is here. Now therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, on this second day of May, 2022, along with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim May, 2022, as Bike Awareness Month. And I'm going to come and bring it to you right now.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, thank you. Just a short. Let me see if I can squeeze this in here. So, I'm Teresa Graham and I'm the chairperson for the Parks and Recreation Commission. And also overseeing the recently dissolved Bikes and Peds Commission. May is Bicycle Awareness Month, encouraging more Gilroy citizens to try biking and also educating them on the benefits of bicycling in our community. The Parks and Recreation Commission is pleased to accept the council's proclamation of Bicycle Awareness Month. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, and the next one is for National Public Works Week. Speaking of first responders, we have Public Works first responders too. And whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of California. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are federally mandated first responders and the engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the City of Gilroy to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works first responders and Public Works programs in our community. And whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, California, do hereby designate the week of May 15th to 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week. There we go, should have said, together with the council, didn't say that in there.
Mayor and council, I want to just thank you on behalf of the dozens of Public Works employees that we have, working hard every morning, every day, keeping this community safe and clean. Thank you for all your support.
Thank you. Okay, fun stuff is over. Item three, public comment, this is the time for any public comment or items not on the agenda. So, yeah, how many?
Madam Mayor, I received eight written public, eight written public comments that was provided to you through email. And I have the two speaker cards, the first one is Ron Kirkish, followed by Marty Cheek.
So two speaker cards on this item, an item's not on the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, three minute time limit, great.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and Community. Earlier today, I sent out a K and N. And it refers to a decision made earlier today that the US Supreme Court ruled that the City of Boston was not, had basically violated the US Constitution, the First Amendment, because they denied a Christian group from flying their flag at the, on their city hall flagpole after they had already approved flying the LGBT flag and any other flag. That was against the Constitution and against the law. I've been requested by people in our community, by the way, the original decision here was based on, I believe, very narrow political personal issues instead of broad issues for the whole community. The thing that, also I've been requested by members of the community to ask you to consider flying the Christian flag and the thin blue flag. I would appreciate it if you would seriously consider those requests. The decision by the US Supreme Court was unanimous. There was not a single vote supporting the Boston decision not to allow the Christian flag to be flown. I think we're going to need some successful changes to our flag policy, thank you.
Thank you, all right, next speaker.
If I may interrupt for just a second, I'll actually be addressing that case in the city attorney's report, which will not come for a while.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Marty Cheek, I'm the publisher of Morgan Hill Life and Gilroy Life Newspapers. And I'm sure some of you have, or all of you have read about a project called Vision 2020 that I've been working on for too many years. And tonight, I want to ask you all a favor. In background of this, this Vision 2020, when I was a young lad of about 10, my mom took me to Berlin, her hometown. And we discussed the war and the bombing that she experienced. And she talked about her grandparents hiding Jews with another Lutheran family in a basement in Berlin. And I made a promise to her, I promised that if I ever could find a way to end wars, to find a freedom from wars, I would. So I've thought about this for 45 years. And I realized that we have technology now from Silicon Valley and throughout America to enable us to achieve this, you know, the digital world that we now live in. I want to, I've been working on some videos that I'm going to be sending to the city clerk tomorrow, to the council members and to every elected official in Santa Clara County and also people who want to be elected officials, people on their campaigns. And I'm asking them to fill out a survey. And it's a Vision 2020 Global Peace Survey. And there's 20 goals that we need to achieve to, to reach the, you know, the ultimate goal of a world forever free of wars by Christmas Day in the year 2040. So I am just going to be sending this out, believe me, I am scared to death about this. But I look at what the world's turning into right now and what's happening in Ukraine, the genocide that's happening there, we're in the 21st century and we can't, you know, we have technology to prevent this. So I need your support, if you can. And if you decline to, please let me know that. Every member, every elected official gets their own webpage on our website to say, yes, I support it, or no, I don't, don't support it. And they can make us some comments about this. This is the first step. The next step is go to the media and share with them, you know, who's supporting Vision 2020 and who's not. And ultimately, the goal is to get every elected official in the United States to support this goal. Because Americans need, right now, more than ever, to be united again, around an ambitious goal. So you'll find in the email, I'm sure tomorrow, hopefully, this, the links to the survey and a short video explaining what I want to achieve. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you, we'll be able to say it started right here. Thanks, Marty. All right, thank you. Are there any others?
No other public comments, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, moving on to item four, reports of council members, Councilmember Bracco.
Yes. I wanted to report that an employee of the Gilroy Library, Sharon Kelly, she was awarded the Outstanding Employee Award last month from the County of Santa Clara. For those that don't know, the library district, all their employees work through the county. We use the county for human resources, payroll and all that. But they are, are employees and she was recognized for that. And one of the things in our meetings, Supervisor Wasserman, he likes to give us quotes and do information. And one of the things he brought up was if we knew that Santa Clara County is the most diverse county in the United States, the County of Santa Clara has more languages spoken in people's homes than anywhere else in the United States. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Almaderas.
No report.
Councilmember Marks.
No report.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mary Blankley. From Visit Gilroy, marketing results from the Visit Gilroy Wedding Expo were shared with the Board of Directors. Highlight includes 43 vendors participated in two, and 200 attended the event. This is the first wedding expo since the fall of 2019. And the interest of Gilroy as a wedding destination was significant based on the outcome of the vendor and attendee surveys. March 2022 Smith Travel Report indicated for lodging properties in Gilroy, a 10% increase in occupancy over prior years. $22, $22 increase in average daily rate. And the most important statistics per hotels was a $21 increase over the prior year in revenue per available room. TOT collected during the month of March increased by 36% over the year prior, which is a trend we are seeing for 2022. For Silicon Valley Clean Energy, first I want to mention that there was a day earlier in April where 97% of the electric grid was, for California, was from renewables. Storage has been critical to reliability during the transition to renewable energy and it charges, and as it charges, using solar and wind output during the middle of the day and reinjects it back into, onto the grid on hot summer evenings with solar production has ended and demand's high. I was able to attend the five-year anniversary for Silicon Valley Clean Energy, where they were recognized by their founders, current and former electeds that sit on the board. SVZ began in 2017 and now provides carbon-free electricity to more, to more than 270,000 residential and commercial customers. Using clean power has helped community, has helped local communities reduce energy-related greenhouse gas emissions by 35% compared to a 2015 baseline and avoid a total of 575 million pounds of greenhouse gas emissions from being released into the atmosphere. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tovar.
No report.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
No report, but the only thing I. The only thing I would say is that I want to thank city staff for putting together the meeting last week with the Gilroy Unified School District. It's always nice to talk with our contemporaries and give their perspective and share what she's concerned.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and for mine, primarily High Speed Rail, I'm sure you've all heard, on April 27th, the High Speed Rail Authority approved the EIR for Alternative 4. So that means the Mercedes-San Jose stretch is not going along 101, but instead going to come into Gilroy from the south. And I say that our Gilroy Transit Center, second to San Jose, will be the most significant hub, transit hub on that stretch, second only to Deirdre. So that's pretty exciting. Of course, the timing of it is the giant unknown. They're saying people will be riding it by 2031. I don't mean to laugh, but it's just that it's been seven years and has barely gotten out of Fresno. So we're hoping, but that's, that is what they're saying. And also saying, I've been promised that, those of us in Gilroy anyway, when we go by the Transit Center, within two to three years, we should actually see somebody out there working on something. As little as it might be, we would actually see something. So I'm kind of counting on that, but I do think our Transit Center is ready. And I, I hope this comes when they, when they say it will. Also, last thing is with Public Works, the proclamation that I just read. And of course, I mean, we really don't give enough attention to what Public Works does with water, when we think about it, water and sewer and our streets and storm drains and all that stuff. And so the same applies to SCR, our water sewer treatment plant. So I want to make sure that everybody knows that this Saturday, the Coffee with the Mayor is going to be with our programs manager out at SCR so that everybody can hear about the stuff that we normally don't hear so much about, but is super, super, super important. Okay, moving on to future council-initiated agenda items.
I have two, Mayor.
Two, okay.
The first one is, I'd like to propose that we ask staff to make a minor language changes to our Complete Streets policy. Since the bike-aided infrastructure duties are transferred from the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission to the Planning Commission, there's just some update on the language in the Complete Streets policy and I'm happy, happy to answer any clarifying questions.
Okay, and then you have a second one?
You want to do that one first?
No, I guess, yeah, right, does anyone else, first of all, does anyone else going to have, is, will anyone else have a future agenda request?
I have one.
Okay, and you have one too. All right, well then, yes, we'll take these. Yeah, we'll do this one at a time and so we'll go back to what you just said. So, go ahead.
Okay, so we have a Complete Streets policy that, that allows us to receive funding for like SB funds and funds from MTC. Since the bike and ped infrastructure duties were listed to be done by the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, it's just a language cleanup to remove Bicycle Pedestrian Commission and add in the Planning Commission.
Okay, is staff maybe already on that, if that's true?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that is typically one of those things that it doesn't happen immediately. We usually are quick to update those kinds of documents. So I don't think this is a, really a big haul for us, we can, we can do that. And I believe we'd bring it back to council for a quick review and approval, but I don't see this as being a.
No, I'm wondering if it needs to be a future agenda item or if you could just do it. I mean, if it's just substituting the, the commission that it now applies to.
I, I can look at that, I, I'm not too sure what it requires to make any modifications to the Complete Streets program. And if it's, I'll do it as simple as possible and I can report mine to council.
Okay.
If I may, it would appear to be just a cleanup item really, caused by the kind of minor change that was made. I would think staff could bring it back, maybe bring back to council as an information item even then. And, but if the policy was adopted by council and probably amendment probably has to be adopted too, even though it's a very minor one.
It doesn't matter that planning is a chartered commission? So we, if we're changing the scope of its work even a little bit, does it have to be council-approved?
I think council has approved the change of the Planning Commission's scope by virtue of merging the other commissions with them. So I think that has already occurred. True, I, I think what Councilmember Hilton is proposing is really just some wording changes rather than a subsequent change, is that correct?
Yeah, I was bringing it to their attention. I mean, just because it, just because you think it would happen, doesn't mean that we assume it. And this is a policy decision, the Complete Streets policy was approved by this body. So, I mean, whether it's something as simple as staff redoing the language and putting it in our consent calendar, I think that would be good enough.
Okay, I, everybody just thumbs up if you, yeah. Okay, so Jimmy, there you go. Okay, item two.
I'd like to propose that we adopt a resolution declaring the month of May as Affordable Housing Month. It was celebrated across our region by government and nonprofit organizations. I believe that doing so will highlight one of our council goals to show the region that we are committed to promoting the availability of safe and affordable housing for all residents. This resolution will reaffirm our commitment to the community plan and homelessness as well. I thank you to the members of the public who have supported this and I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor, just a question, because I was doing some research. On March 22nd, we did a resolution on Fair Housing Month. So I'm trying to understand the difference and how the requested proclamation is beneficial to Gilroy. Because it sounds like, I'm not sure where Gilroy fits in that. And I thought that the resolution that we did back in March was, what, you know, was sufficient to what's being asked.
Fair housing and affordable housing are, are two very different things. I mean, I don't want to get in the discussion of it, but.
Okay.
They're two separate things and, and if you go outside and you look now, the whole entire region is celebrating Affordable Housing Month from Silicon Valley at Home, Housing Action Coalition, Community Plan and Homelessness Destination Home, they're all, they're doing something every single day of this month, so.
Okay, I, I want to thank you, Councilmember Hilton, for asking, asking me first and going through the process for getting this proclamation. I, because we had just proclaimed April 2022 as Fair Housing Month, which, as Fair Housing Month, right? Which encompasses all that we stand for as an inclusive community for housing opportunities and not only limited to income levels. I felt this request needed to be a council majority request, if that's what this council wants to do. As long as Gilroy is at the bottom of our county's income chain and affordable housing is defined by countywide AMI, a proclamation based solely on affordable does more to support adding housing in Gilroy for those who don't currently live here than it does to benefit existing residents who struggle to compete with the income levels of the rest of the county. Proclamations are meant to proclaim sentiments and we did so beautifully, I thought, with our Fair Housing proclamation that was inclusive of all of the sentiment that we stand for, where we pledged our commitment to improve housing options and celebrate the value of harmonious and diverse communities by promoting fair housing law. So we're discussing the merits of this now? No, I'm responding to his request for this. Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, you know, I, when I hear this, I, I had kind of a similar thought as Councilmember Tovar did with regard to the Fair Housing Resolution that we did declaring April Fair Housing Month. You know, and if I recall correctly, the Fair Housing Resolution dealt with, I think, both options. both options and practices, and I I think that does encompass the affordability component. I don't think you can have fair housing that doesn't take affordability into account. And so for me, you know, I I I think that if if there are others who want to, um, you know, go out and support the the other events kind of going a- around the county and support this, I think that's great, but I think our last, uh, resolution kind of already did this and already encompassed that, so I I think it's kind of already been addressed.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Bracco, Councilmember Armendaras, and then Councilmember Marks.
Yeah, I I don't understand why we really do this stuff anyway. A piece of paper is not gonna add one unit to the stock of houses. Um, and it, uh, what I find interesting, the same groups and and folks behind having resolutions, saying we're we're doing something, are the same folks that are pushing solar panels on all the houses, you know, bicycle lockers, charging stations, electric, uh, appliances only in in houses, which all just adds to the price of the house and puts it out of reach for most folks. So I I just, I I don't care either way, but I I think it's pretty useless because it doesn't mean anything.
Thank you. Well, after everyone has their chance to speak, we're gonna have to do a thumbs up or thumbs down, so you'll have to do one or the other. Okay, uh, Councilmember Armendaras.
So just a point of order, this sounds like everything so far has sounded like we're discussing the merits of this versus just putting it on the agenda or not. And we were told by Andy lots of times, that's not what this, this is part of the agenda's about, so.
Council Armendaras is correct. We are, I I I interpret the discussion as being whether or not it should go on the agenda. It's hard to separate a little merits discussion from that, but she's correct that, of course, our discussion is about whether to put it on the agenda.
So do I not call on the others? Shall I not call on the others?
No, I think you should.
Okay, Councilmember Marks.
All right, well, to me, action speaks a lot, you know, louder than words. And even though this proclamation is good and we all agree with affordable housing, on the other hand, from today to the end of April, is there any more new affordable housing? It's just words. I would love to see next year with this council to do this proclamation and celebrate all of the new affordable housing that allowed Gilroy citizens to actually get into homes. Because when June first comes, how many Gilroy families will be able to come and say, yes, this proclamation actually got us into it? I think sometimes we get carried away with proclamations trying to make ourselves feel better, and are they really doing anything for the citizens?
Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. And I mean, I may go off of the comments made by Councilwoman Marks about action speak louder than words, and I I, again, when it comes to affordable housing and fair housing, I think we're all, most of us, if not all of us, are in agreement that it's needed, obviously. And if if bringing this proclamation or this discussion to a council meeting, I'm in favor of that, for us to have those discussions as Councilwoman Marks has mentioned, we know what's our, what's our plan. You know, if this is something that's gonna lead us to a plan, then I'm all for it. Um, I was just trying to understand, I I I do know the difference between fair and affordable. I was just trying to understand the merits of, um, what it was gonna actually do for the citizens of Gilroy, but.
This is a request for a proclamation? Okay, a proclamation declaring the month of May Affordable Housing Month.
Actually, I'm asking for a resolution, not a proclamation. You already turned down the proclamation, so I'm asking for a resolution.
Oh, I thought I heard you say proclamation, sorry.
I said it.
Okay, so tho- those in support, uh, please thumbs up.
I wanted to say something else.
Oh, again, okay.
Yeah. So, um, again, we're discussing the merits of this, not, um, which is what we're not supposed to do, but I think it's interesting that whenever, um, certain subjects are brought before us for a proclamation, then they are scrutinized more highly than others. Um, we declared two proclamations just a couple of minutes ago for two issues that are very important and merit our time and our affirmation, but, um, but issues like housing and others, um, are often highly scrutinized, and I think that we need to be fair and we need to, um, um, apply our openness to this, these discussions across the table, uh, when they're, when they're asked for, when they're requested by us. It's for a good reason, especially housing. We have not been the best at, um, providing housing, affordable or otherwise, for our folks on, uh, the lower income spectrum. Thank you.
Right, and we just did fair housing, that's what we're saying. So, okay, so those who want to, all right, I think we need to, uh, end the discussion going on, and just, uh, those who wish to support this resolution.
Supporting, bringing the resolution to the council.
Support and bringing the resolution to the coun- okay, as a future agenda item. I see one, I see two, three, four, five. Okay, it's five to two, so, all right? And then Councilmember Marks, you had something.
Uh, yes, I do. Oops. Uh, yes, I do. I would like to, uh, suggest a study session between the City of Gilroy and, uh, the Gilroy Garlic Festival Organization, because there has been so much that's out there in the public that I don't think there's any transparency, because we're not getting the full story, and the public's not getting the full story. And I think we need to allow the public the right to hear a full discussion with everyone present on what is actually going on, why people made the decisions they've made. So, and and we could do this in August or September. It's not anything urgent, because I don't think the Garlic Festival's ready to go on this year anyway, but I think we owe it to the public, the taxpayers, to hear everyone's side.
So your request is for a study session?
Yes.
So a separate meeting, okay? And Jimmy, that's, you're aware of that?
What what this, Madam Mayor, what this would entail would be an invitation to the Garlic Festival Board of Directors to have a co-meeting with the council. Uh, I could certainly coordinate that and identify a date, um, as, uh, Councilmember Marks has suggested for later in the summer, early in the fall.
Okay.
Uh, to have an open meeting and discuss those topics.
We'd invite their entire board?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yes, Councilmember Tovar.
Mayor, if I may, um, uh, I've I've been in contact with the Christopher family regarding something very similar to this, so, um, I think that, um, this was something we were gonna bring forward in the future, but since, uh, Councilmember Marks has brought it up, I'm I'm all in favor of it, but I think that we should also get the Christopher family involved as well in this discussion.
Yeah, I don't think so, but, yeah, sorry, they're just, they're a sponsor.
Yeah.
They're a sponsor, they're not on the board, but, okay, so, uh, can we have, are you, oh, are you waiting to speak, Councilmember Armendaras?
Um, I think I could skip it if everybody's ready to vote.
Okay?
Yeah.
So those in favor of a study session with the Board of Directors of the Garlic Festival Because they're not on the board of the Garlic Festival Association.
But but it would be a public meeting.
Yeah, they could certainly attend. Okay? Okay, that appears unanimous, so that'll be an extra meeting to be scheduled this year. Okay, are we moving on then from future agenda items and on to the consent calendar? I'm gonna start by asking if any council member wishes to remove an item from consent? Seeing none? Wait, wait, then I gotta open public comment. Are there any public comments on consent items?
I received no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then closing public comment and. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Bracco, seconded by Councilmember Armendaras to approve all items on the consent calendar. Uh, oh, digital voting. Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you. All right, item seven, bids and proposals, we have none. Item eight, introduction of new business. City Council position on proposed Santa Clara Valley Water District's ballot measure concerning board member term limits. Uh, Jimmy, you're going to give us this report, okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before you, there's an item that has been on the agenda for Valley Water, and, uh, in advance of to evening, this evening's, uh, meeting, you've been provided the staff report that was provided to the their board by their staff, and also you received a fact sheet from, uh, the administration of the Water District with, uh, just the Measure A fact, so those were provided to you, uh, for consideration. Uh, the ballot measure, uh, that has been approved by the Board of Directors of Valley Water is, uh, for, uh, June seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and, uh, I will simply read the the ballot language and then, um, ask you for, uh, any policy direction you may, uh, choose to go with. Um, a yes vote of the ballot measure supports authorizing an amendment to the Santa Clara County, or Santa Clara Valley Water District ordinance, limiting district board members to no more than four consecutive terms and establishing four-year term limits. A no vote opposes authorizing an amendment regarding term limits for board members to the Santa Clara Valley Water District ordinance. Um, it only requires a simple majority of, for approval of Measure A. Uh, the fact sheet that is included, uh, in your, in your packet and for your information references, uh, the current, uh, term limits that the Valley Water Board has, which is three, four-year terms, so that's twelve years, and the ballot measure would move that to sixteen years. Uh, so the policy direction that council is requested to consider is, one, uh, council could just decide not to take a position. Uh, you could take a position to, uh, support this ballot measure, or you could take a position to not support this ballot measure. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Okay, so I see the lineup starting, so, uh, if you'd like to speak, please make sure your name is on the board. Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Jimmy, is this information that we've been provided is the first we're seeing it right now, correct? It wasn't, I mean, we weren't given any information prior to this.
There is a staff report, and there is the resolution in the in the agenda packet, but the information you have here, which is the Measure A fact sheet, was given to us right before the meeting, and then I circulated the, uh, Valley Water staff report earlier today.
No, no, and I appreciate that, I'm not, I guess my question is, who provided the information to you, this information that we're just getting?
Uh, I, the fact sheet was provided by Valley Water, the staff report I obtained from their website.
Okay, so, yeah, I guess the question is, is this information that we asked from them before and we're just getting now?
They provided the fact sheet on their own. Uh, we included the staff report after discussions with Valley Water in order to give you, uh, their staff report, which we did not include in the original, uh, agenda packet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Armendaras.
Jimmy, is the the language that they're providing to us that seems, um, a bit, um, well, it seems to me that it's saying they would limit current and future terms, right, to four, four-year terms. The language reads as if they previously had no term limits, correct? But, and I think that's in the report, when in fact they had a three-year, a three-term for, three, four-year term limits. Is that the language that's been approved by the registrar or by the state to be on the ballot?
It is my understanding that the language I I read to you for a yes support or a no is the language that has been approved at this point and would be included on the June seventh ballot.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Marks.
Jimmy, could you please share with the public how much this ballot measure's gonna cost?
Uh, included in the Valley Water staff report that they provided to their Board of Directors, it is estimated that it could cost up to three point three million dollars to place on the ballot. However, that number could be reduced depending on the number of items on that ballot if there were other measures or other elections to be held, but that was what they reported to their board.
All right, thank you.
Have a follow-up question?
Okay, Peter, did you have a question? Okay, I'm gonna let him go next and then come back.
Jimmy, I'm I'm just a little confused as to how this kind of even came to us for consideration. Was this brought to us by the district asking us, or was this on our own initiative?
No, this was not brought to us by the district, that this was on our own initiatives. We do occasionally bring, uh, items to the council to honor their support. We also give them the option of not voicing any opinion at all on the matter, so, um, it's not all that unusual, but, uh, yeah, we did generate this.
Okay, all right, I'll I'll, I have no further question this time, thanks.
Okay, back to Councilmember Armendaras.
The, uh, three point three million dollars, that's the cost that it will cost the Valley Water District, or, um, you know, indirectly to voters, but, or is that the cost of the county to put this particular ballot measure on the ballot?
I I believe that when you place a ballot measure on the, um, on the ballot, you have to pay for it.
Correct.
Uh, so I would assume that this comes out of their revenues or or their funding source, so I don't want to get too in the details because I'm not the expert on their their budget, but most likely, uh, it comes through their revenues.
At cost to Valley Water.
Yes.
Okay.
My understanding is this is money paid by.
By voters.
By, well, paid by Valley Water to the county.
Right.
So where Valley Water gets it is another matter.
Right, that's my question.
Yeah, I think the registrar of voters charges the county and any agency for whatever it is they put on the ballot.
Right.
So anything that goes on the ballot is gonna be paid for by the, by the jurisdiction that it's coming from. Yeah, and it is, it, they do currently have three, four-year term limits, and they have to wait at least four years before they can do another three, three-year term limits. So they just can't do it consecutively. So this is, this is them asking the voters if they can extend their term limits to four. And so it's for this council now to decide if you want to give an opinion at all, support, deny, or no opinion. Oh, yeah.
Yes, public comment.
Public comment.
Um, I've received no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment, back to council.
I'd.
Oh, go ahead.
I would just motion no, um, that we not opine on this one.
Say it again?
No, take no action?
Yeah, take no action.
I'll second that.
Okay, and now I see, uh, Peter's on the board and, uh, Zach is on the board.
Yeah, that that's what I was gonna suggest as well, I mean, the the, the alleged rationale for this is allowing greater consistency to provide for expertise, for people who understand difficult concepts to remain on the, on the district board, but, um, I I mean, I don't, I don't feel that I have a solid enough understanding of of how complex those things are and how much this really needs to happen, so I'm of the opinion that we should, uh, we should stay out of this one.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Councilmember Hilton, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say I'm in favor of term limits. I I understand them, I think they're a good thing. I'm glad that Valley Water actually is an elected body and not appointed, um, but at three point three million, when they're getting ready to raise rates, just doesn't seem fiscal or responsible to me. I was ready to say no and don't support it, but if you all want to just take a no, no action, I I could follow along with that too. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm really indifferent myself, um, even though I am a supporter of the three, not the four, but I can do that at my own ballot, so I don't need to have the, I I don't need it to be a council thing. Okay, so we have a motion in a second to take no, no position on this, so vote, okay?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Romoños?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blingfield?
Yes. Okay, that's unanimous. All right, item eight point two, progress update on the unhoused ad hoc committee recommendations. And, uh, Jimmy, no, Bryce, hi Bryce.
Good morning, Mayor and council. So tonight, we're giving an update on the progress of the recommendations of City Council for, uh, the unhoused. Uh, just a real quick background, there's fourteen recommendations in total, uh, twelve recommended by the unhoused ad hoc committee, and then council added two, and they finally approved it. Um, the committee ended its work on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at which point oversight transitioned to the City Council. Uh, staff continued to work on those recommendations, uh, as time has gone on. Uh, so the slides are presented in order of the status of the project, so I want to start off with the pending items. So these are items that either have not yet started or are in early stages of starting. Uh, so first is ensuring the county, state, water district, and private property owners are accountable for maintaining their properties in a clean condition. So the program administrators developing outreach materials, uh, to send out to property owners regarding their responsibilities to maintain their property. Uh, the plan is that once that outreach is completed, uh, they will be working with code enforcement, uh, in order to develop the best procedures and process going forward to make sure that they are indeed held accountable for that property. Um, the seat does continuously notify Caltrans, Valley Water, um, and the state when their properties require upkeep. Uh, we do have mixed results whether they actually do respond at a timely manner to clean up their properties or not. The second item, uh, second recommendation is organization of community cleanup days. Uh, so at this time, um, we have not, uh, had such a, uh, no such, um, event has been coordinated yet that's city-led. Uh, we have had a couple of, um, local organizations that, uh, tried to initiate their own events, some successful, some not. Uh, but this subject is the topic of conversation in the next quarter for the, um, unhoused But this subject is the topic of conversation in the next quarter for the unhoused service providers task force that's gathered together. And the third one that's in the pending status is researching an agency to provide drug rehab, job training, job placement. At this time, we've not identified a nonprofit agency to provide the drug rehabilitation services in Gilroy. We did find two in San Jose that do serve those that are like fiscally challenged, but they generally have to be associated with some type of project or program. It's not something that anybody can just generally walk in on. There's quite a few commercial ones where if you have insurance, you're willing to pay for it, but again, those are mostly located up in San Jose. One of the challenges is that we are smaller population, we have quite a bit of distance between us and the adult drug courts that are in San Jose, so that presents a challenge because they like to locate near where their clientele, for lack of a term, would be. We are working on a grant right now with the Department of Justice to look at using that grant potentially to work with another agency to maybe financially incentivize them to come and provide services down here, but we have to find an associated organization in order to provide that service. We're continuing to work on that one with a grant application period ending at the end of this month. So we'll keep the council updated on the progress of that effort. And then the job training and placement is the next area of focus, once we get the drug rehabilitation service identified. The next slide are those projects that are in progress at this point in time. So the first is a safe parking program. We, as council recall, we had unsuccessful RFP process for the first attempt at the safe parking program. We did have one submittal from the Compassion Center. The city, the Compassion Center, and Santa Clara County have entered discussions on the program, but at this point, there is no formal agreement with the city at this time. With some challenges related to property location for the safe parking program, it remains possible that a suitable location may be found, at which point then the city can consider contributing perhaps PLHA funds towards case management or one of the other services associated with the safe parking program. So again, this is one thing, this is one that the work is continuing, and we'll continue to monitor and update council as we go. And then the third is explore, I'm sorry, second is the support of a mobile garbage removal program. So with council's approval, we did approve, enter into a contract with U.S. Ecology for a budget of $100,000. We have spent about $50,900, which has entailed three cleanups, Highway 101 and 152 interchange, that was the largest one that we had, cleanup at Ren's Lane on the eastern side, and then also a dump site at Hiroasaki on the north side of town. We are considering options for one-day dumpster availabilities for unhoused, basically located at their encampments to help discard whatever refuse they have. The one challenge that we have heard both from, from the experiences of the Compassion Center, but also U.S. Ecology, is that once those dumpsters are placed, it quickly becomes, word gets out that, hey, there's a place, we can just dump whatever we want. So we're working to try to find a way to set up the program where it's same-day drop-off, same-day pickup, and it somehow is monitored in order to prevent illegal dumping from happening there. And then the third one is exploring the purchase of a garbage compactor truck. We did have an unsuccessful procurement for the compactor truck. However, afterwards, staff who are involved in the cleanups on the city side did recommend that a custom dump truck body would be a better selection than the compactor truck for a couple of reasons. One, usability with the license. Two, also is the concerns about compacting garbage with potentially biohazard and having issues about cross-contaminating the full load. So at this point, bids were then submitted for a custom-built dump truck. Unfortunately, we, again, did not have any successful bids for that one. We did have one that proposed a custom dump body bed, so that is the option that staff pursued. That is under construction, currently slated for mid-summer delivery. Fleet and code enforcement staff have visited the construction in progress, and no issues or concerns with the design has been identified at this time. Next are those that are completed. So the first one is the endorsement of the community plan in homelessness. Council did approve that endorsement resolution. The second one was exploring the differences between a police officer and a community service officer. Again, that was completed with the committee as far as deciding to proceed with a police officer. And the third is the hiring of the quality-of-life officers. And so there were two officers selected that are currently serving in this role. There will be future updates to council regarding that program as it progresses. Finally, the fourth category of recommendations that are continuing and ongoing. So the first one is whenever possible, be proactive and support affordable housing efforts. Again, this is an ongoing business practice, and so staff will continue to support ongoing affordable housing efforts in collaboration with council and local unhoused service providers, and that city now has connections with those service providers, with the county, in order to connect to resources that we previously didn't have or didn't utilize. Partnering with the city of Morgan Hill, again, this is also an ongoing business practice. We have been working with the city of Morgan Hill on various regional approaches, and ultimately, their housing manager, Rebecca Garcia, has been a great resource for Gilroy in pursuing programs and identifying information and issues that we encounter. Third is continuing support for homeless service providers through the CBG grant funding. So that is an action item that is on tonight's agenda as well. So council authorized funding back in for the 2021 year, and tonight it will be considered in the 2022 allocations. Next is the coordination of the monthly check-in meetings with the local, with the lead homeless service providers to address local homeless issues. City staff, the program administrator, has re-engaged local service providers and facilitated monthly meetings since January. They're now calling themselves unhoused service providers, which is the renamed task force. Their attendance has increased from eight to 22 attendees. Currently, they're working on planning, including drafting goals and developing working themes and strategies, as well as response plans for unhoused during inclement weather. The monthly meetings are planned to continue, and the primary benefit of the meeting is that there's now collaboration, networking that's happening more along with the city. And then finally, partnering with the county offices of supportive housing, establishing a partnership to have access to our programs and services. This collaboration continues to develop. This is one of the benefits, is the PLHA funding program that's being discussed later tonight. The cities continue to work with offices of supportive housing to identify locations for like Measure A home, or Measure A housing projects, and then that, the connections, the inter-agency collaboration has been expanding as we've proceeded along one of these recommendations, and it's expected to continue throughout the efforts forthcoming. So that completes the presentation. Happy to address any questions or comments.
Okay. Again, if you have any questions, please make sure you're on the board. Councilmember Armandares.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few, but I have two that are related. Can I ask those two first?
Okay.
Okay. Bryce, thank you, and Crystal and your team for your work on this. Regarding the cleanups and the dumpsters, the cleanup seemed incredibly expensive for having, there's only been three or four, right? And it's, we've spent $150,000. Can you tell us in detail a little bit more why they're so expensive?
Yeah, so we've spent, so $50,000 of the $100,000 has been spent.
Okay.
So the largest part at $30,000 was the Highway 152 and 101 interchange, just because of the large area. And the challenge that we have, the cost increase, obviously labor is a large part of that, but also is the waste disposal, since there is bio-waste in there, it takes extra special steps and procedures, not just for the handling at the site, but also for the shipping and disposing of it as well. So it's a combination of those two costs are the large parts.
Thank you. And then regarding the dumpsters, have we reached out to our local orgs like Pit Stop, Compassion Center, or maybe some civic orgs to partner on keeping an eye on those dumpsters or just keeping them there for a limited amount of time so that somebody could keep an eye on them so that they're not used by the neighborhood or folks who aren't unhoused?
Yeah, so that's, we haven't explored that with them specifically yet, but that's one of the, part of this conversation we're gonna have with them this next quarter with them on the cleanup days, is to include that as well, so try to see what kind of services we can kind of come together and collaborate on, so if they can provide oversight. The one question would be how, you know, we'd have to explore with them and also with risk managers, how far can they go to actually intervene between somebody trying to access, and what's the risk levels there?
Yeah.
So that's something we do have to explore with them, but that is something in our consideration and pursuit.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Bracco.
Are we gonna be reimbursed for cleaning up Caltrans' highway?
We're gonna submit for it, but as far as I know, I can't guarantee, you know, their response, but we are gonna be submitting a claim for them.
Councilmember Bracco, we have submitted a request, but we, I wouldn't hold your breath on that, getting a check, but we did hit them.
Also, on the garbage compactor truck, the reason that the subcommittee recommended that was a request from our police department, because you can throw couches in there, mattresses, and it's compacts them down, and now we're just getting a dump truck. Why, why is staff overriding council's decision? I don't think that's right. It should have came back to the council, because we have dump trucks. So it feels like to me, well, we're just crossing something off of staff's want list and paying for it with this money.
Councilmember Bracco, that was a recommendation from the ad hoc committee, and it falls within the purview of our purchasing ability to make those adjustments. We had numerous issues that would have driven that cost and would have made it not sustainable at all, and one is being that if you compact garbage and you have biohazard in it, you didn't have a responsibility. In determining what the proper vehicle be, that was something we couldn't take on. We don't have the ability to, so we wouldn't have anything at all. And so our staff, who was out there daily, working on the cleanup areas, have found this to be the most effective tool to do the most work. In some of these situations, yeah, sure, we could bring that back to council, but we make decisions and we still feel that was the right decision to make, because that's the only thing practical for the work we're doing out there. Compacting things like mattresses and couches are helpful, but we also have alternate ways to get that. We have a mattress collection date here coming up in a few weeks. We also have been working with Recology on their contract with the city to provide more opportunities for people to dump very large items. So we felt with all that going on, this was the best thing for us to do for our employees and for the effectiveness of the program.
I think in the future, it should come back to the council, because we see the water district, they use compactor trucks, and they don't seem to have a problem. So I think it would be best for everyone if it came back to council and let us know why our request is being changed.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor Blingley. Bryce, I'm happy to see that there's an increase in the, that task force that staff has put on and Crystal's putting on, that from eight to 22 attendees. What kind of metrics or evaluation is staff thinking, like, once a year, come back with, you know, recommendations and where this group is going? Because I know that a lot of the providers in this group have been advocates for years in their own worlds and their, you know, and it's nice for them to come together, but is there, besides just having a meeting once a month, like, what's gonna, what's gonna be the outcome from it? And are there gonna be recommendations that are coming from it? Or will they be presenting to us, like, once a year? What makes it worth it for you all to continue it?
So I'd have to defer to our program administrator, but I believe, I believe that's the purpose of the work plans they're doing, the strategy sessions, but...
A little warm-up from my other two reports. You know, definitely, you know, the city had been part of the group for years, like you mentioned, but actually, we actually took on facilitating it again, starting in January. And that was actually the first thing that we did in January, is to send out, send out a survey, see like, hey, how was it before? Where are you now? Where do we want to be? So we kind of started off with that as like our first meeting, and that's, you know, it has only been since January. I feel like the group has come a long way, but that is definitely one of the things that we're working on. One of the things is you have, there is a vision, and there are strategies, very specific strategies that the group has drafted. I just wanted to solidify them more, to like, have them be set. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to say that, the last meeting we had, it was still in draft, so that is definitely the goal, and annually, we do want to make sure that we're meeting. We want to have it be like smart, right? Specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and time-bound. That's the whole kind of point of this. But also, there's been a lot of great points that the group has come together and decided that this is the direction we want to go. So I could explain more in the next time, but I didn't print out my, the drafted things.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Bryce, I have two questions. First of all, thank you to your team, yourself and your team for the work that you guys are doing. My first question was partly answered by the city administrator. As you recall, a while back ago, I pushed for the mattress removal program, and Jimmy just mentioned that's gonna be happening soon. Do we know the exact date, and are we gonna be promoting that to the community?
Specific date is not known at this point in time, but yes, we will put that out through our social media avenues as well, and then we may work with the task force as well to get information out through them as well.
Okay, thank you. Second question, in regards to the garbage removal and the garbage truck and the community cleanup, and forgive me if I misunderstood, but I think during our ad hoc committee discussions, we talked about a possible program where, not only to focus in on certain areas, but focus in citywide. And I had shared there, the city, I think it was Mountain View, they have a garbage cleanup day once a month where residents can put garbage, you know, and we would go around and pick it up, and just sort of something that, from my understanding from their council, it's a very successful program. It helps keep their city clean. Is that a discussion that we, or something that we're looking into?
It is, it's one of the considerations, I believe, that, so there's certain community cleanup events, but again, one of the things would be, A, so the U.S. Ecology contract is, it's just too cost prohibitive to try to use them for that process. I know that the, for a new franchise agreement, which may include cleanup events, so we're looking at options, but no firm plan at this point.
Mr. Tovar, the date of the mattress event is June 4th, and Bryce is correct, when the city staff brings back to you the Recology agreement, you're gonna see a lot more community engagement and community opportunities for waste disposal due to restrictions of a lot of the, if you've ever been to the dump, like the San Martin Transfer Station, it is quite expensive. So we're, we're working hard on that, and we should be with council here shortly with some of the ideas that we have.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question, Bryce. On the safe parking program, does in-progress mean that we've got some new information coming? Or is this just, we've tried certain things and we just haven't gotten anywhere yet?
So it's, so the in-progress designation is that we've made progress work, so it's not pending anymore, it's something that's currently underway, has some good depth, but we haven't finished it yet. Still something that's in progress and trying to determine a way to achieve that, that project goal.
Right, because we still only have one, one offer to run a safe parking program, right?
We actually, the council actually voted to cancel that RFP, so we ended up engaging directly with Compassion Center, the only one that submitted, to see what kind of program would be useful or possible with them. And so I, you know, unfortunately, discussions that have to defer to Crystal as far as where that is at this point.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there's, if there's anything identified there at all that we could possibly, that, I'm asking for what the update is. What is it, what is it in terms of a location and in terms of a total cost that we think we might be able to manage, since what was submitted before was something not manageable?
Yeah, so at this point, I, there's not really a plan at this point, that, nothing concrete. So we're still waiting to see, from my understanding, they're working with the county on a potential location, and once that's resolved, if it's gonna happen or not, at that point, we'd have a little more information that we could base going forward. So at this point, it's just a continuing, and there's no real update as far as any new information that we have for specifics.
Okay, is that the same location, though, that we're trying to get Measure A funds for housing?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Councilmember Armandares?
My questions are regarding the quality-of-life officers. Can you, are you aware of the different trainings or, in particular regarding resources, approaches, and difference, again, between the, our regular officers and the quality-of-life officers? Like, what's, what's being offered to them?
Unfortunately, I don't have that information. I don't know if the pals are available. I know Chief Espinoza gave a presentation before on it.
Then the other one question would be about the, like, are they keeping particular sets of data about what they're encountering? Just so we know the difference between what our regular officers are doing and what these folks are doing.
Definitely. As far as data goes, they're keeping track of all their contacts and resources provided, and those people that they're actually getting into housing. As far as training goes, yes, there's a different training track that they're involved in. I don't have specific names of the training they're going to, but for example, like Restorative Justice Training, they're going to that kind of stuff. Currently, what they're doing is going around and going to other cities that have quality-of-life officer positions, and they're learning from those positions that have been in existence for over a year now. So we're learning from other agencies and other cities that have existing programs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions from council, I'll go to the public. If, yeah, public comment? I've received no speaker cards, Madam Mayor. Okay, closing public comment, and this is, there's really no action here except to receive the report, so with that, we will move on to Agenda Item 8.3. Approval of a permanent local housing allocation, five-year expenditure plan, and Crystal is going to give us this report.
Hello, everybody. This is exciting. I want to come every Monday. I get to be here, yeah. Dad's taking care of the kids. It's perfect.
Yeah, dad's taking care of the kids. It's perfect. Um, yeah, so, so today we're.
Pull the microphone closer to you, to your mouth.
Right here? Okay, perfect. Um, yeah, so I, um, I'm gonna try to not keep the report too long since we have two. This one is the shorter one. So I'll try to get through it as fast as, uh, we, we can. So just a little bit of the background, um, on the PLHA, it's the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Fund. Uh, late last year, October 2021, um, dialogues started with the county and actually made us aware of the PLHA funding source. And so, uh, council on the 15th, uh, said that we can go ahead and, um, a- approve the participation of it. In December, we actually signed the agreement. Is it, is it not on? Oh. Oh, that looks better. Uh, yeah, so, so signed in December and, um, we really wanted to make sure that we kept in mind with the, this fund that our public service grant program, uh, would benefit as well as, um, other potential programs down the line, like a down payment assistance program. And it would, um, make funds available down the road, like Bryce had mentioned, for a safe parking program or kind of other qualifying needs. Um, it also addressed, um, that for fiscal year 22, 23, we actually have a depleting HTF, uh, a housing trust fund balance. Um, and for this reason, the council approximated, uh, only a hundred thousand dollars, which it historically had done 168. Um, but through this fund, you can make 168 available plus more. So that is definitely one of the benefits. Uh, quickly about the agreement, it is, um, going to be administered under the Office of Supportive Housing for the county. It is a five-year term and we decided, this is, uh, other cities are in this consortium and, uh, they kind of did their kind of different version. So this is just very specific for Gilroy. And we decided we wanted to do of, um, the amounts that, that were allocated to do 50% homeless prevention. And this is across five years, 20% basic needs, and then 30% for the down payment assistance program. The percentage breakdowns is, in the first two years, it would be homeless, uh, prevention and basic needs. The reason we didn't, um, go ahead and just do the down payment assistance, we weren't ready. Like we don't have a down payment assistance program. So we thought we needed to give ourselves, uh, some time to make sure that that's, uh, developed. So that would start in the third year and go on to the, to the fifth year of that plan. Um, good news, the first two years have already been awarded. So we already know what that, what that amount is. And then the following three years are based on projections. Um, staff continues to talk with the county about, uh, different processes, um, especially, you know, depending how much is gonna be put where, like for instance, uh, we'll, we'll see in the, in the plan, um, you know, if we have to pursue modifications. So the plan that I'm going to be presenting is, uh, so like I explained, the first two years, that is the amount, oh, by the way, this is a, it, this is excluding the county's 5% fee. Um, and then, so the first two years, it kind of has them lumped together, but on the report, it actually has the, the plan. So if you wanted to see what it would look like for year one and year two, you can, you can see that on there. And then if you see year three and five, um, you don't see basic needs in there. It's, um, homeless prevention, but it is a category under it. So actually, no, there's, there's, there's none available there because we expended all of it in the first two years. And then the down payment assistance program starts, um, in that, uh, that third year. So the total amount would be, would make available 1.39 million. So these are your options, uh, except the funding allocations negotiated with the county, which is what I just presented. Um, and if you choose to keep this plan, um, no further action or agreement is needed. Um, or if you would like to request to change the percentages of the five-year plan, then, then we can discuss that.
All right, thank you. Council member LaRomaine Oss.
Crystal, thank you for the.
I'm so sorry. I forgot. I have, I have one more slide. I'm so sorry. I don't have it in front of me, like the whole, the whole amount. Um, the fiscal impact, just quickly, uh, this does provide, like I mentioned, it, it does provide new resources and aid to the city. It helps, um, you know, like we were mentioning earlier, does, uh, uh, make available supporting more affordable housing. Um, it also helps our city's unhoused homeless populations. Um, and the fact that the county is administering, uh, the fee, it actually, we're, the city is not gonna receive any of the funds, so, um, directly. So there is no fiscal impact. Um, oh, this is the, this is the, the plan that I also printed out in the report. Just if you wanted to see more of a breakdown, um, of what it would be every year and then what the basic, what, what the percentages of homeless prevention and basic needs would have to be met. Um, there is a little bit of flexibility in here, about 10%, but, uh, we, we tried to keep it to, to, to this right now.
Okay, you might wanna leave the prior slide up just because it's got information on it, but I don't know what people's questions are. Council member LaRomaine.
That's helpful. Uh, Crystal, thank you for the report. And, and I probably missed this in here, but you know, I, I think it's pretty clear when we look at the funding categories, like homeless prevention, I think we all kind of get that. And, you know, down payment assistance, I think we all kind of get that. What is comprised or of, um, of basic needs? What, what, what kind of services are we, are we actually doing there?
So in, oh, and I guess I could get it, um, I'll read it right off the agreement.
That, that's helpful. Cause I, and the context for it is, is we're deciding about the allocations. I just think it'd be helpful to know specifically what it is that's provided under that category.
Yes. And, okay, so it is, uh, so 20% would be towards the basic services, uh, for homelessness, including the costs associated with administering maybe a safe parking program.
Um, wait, it's hard to hear you. Can you, that's okay. Just either speak more slowly or into the mic.
Um, it's basically for those, those at risk of experiencing homelessness, including but not limited to provided wrapping, rehousing, rental assistant, assistance, supportive case management surface, uh, services to allow people to obtain or retain housing, operating and capital costs for navigating centers, emergency centers. Um, just a, a few of the examples that they had there.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense for how that differs from the homeless prevention. It sounds more like homeless prevention, that those are expenditures for programs for people who are currently housed, but maybe at risk of going, becoming unhoused.
And basic needs are for those who are homeless, who need those, uh, supplies, services.
And that's more, yeah, prevention, prevention is, no, you, you and I are thinking in the same direction. Prevention is preventing the problem. And then the, uh, basic needs is the intervention for those who are already finding themselves in that circumstance. Okay, that's, that's helpful.
And then like item, yeah.
Yeah, I just need to clarify in my own mind. I'm a little slow sometimes. Thank you.
Okay, good question. Thank you. All right, council member Marx.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. I have a few questions. Um, where does the PLHA funds come from? Is that, are they coming from the county?
From the, um, uh, HCD, I believe, yes.
Oh, okay. And then for the down payment assistance program, who qualifies for that or who can apply?
That's a great question. That's, uh, what we're giving ourselves two years to figure out. So that's why we, um, we decided that we would, we, we knew that it was gonna be to support either, you know, getting into like a, maybe a BMR property or, you know, it, it's, if you see the amount, it's, it's not like we have a million dollars to help people get into homes. So we're really trying to figure out how we're gonna be getting folks into, um, into house.
So they would have to be at a certain economic level, right? Uh, maybe extremely low income?
That's what we envision, yeah. That's what we would envision for that.
All right.
It's not, it's not a fully developed program. That's what we're giving ourselves two years for, but it would be specifically to get people into homes that maybe otherwise they couldn't. I, either could, that could be like, okay, maybe we can't, you know, give 30%, 20% down, but maybe we can help with 10% down and that gets that person in a home. So that could be an example.
All right. Then what safeguards are in place to guarantee that these funds are used appropriately by all the nonprofits?
Well, we go through a pretty thorough, um, uh, the same process that CDBG, that you'll see in the next report, that CDBG goes to. We have had that same process for getting applications, monitoring, you know, all those things with the, which was the housing trust funds that will now become PLHA funds. So we're handing that over. And that's part of what we're doing with the county is handing that over. They, they wanna know, okay, how did you, um, how did you figure out these amounts for these, because now they're gonna have it. And so, um, the process is still a little, no, we're still figuring that out right now, the administration part. But now that will only be, excuse me, now it's gonna, uh, non, uh, nonprofits will now have to apply through the county. And then they will come to the city and give their recommendations. And then we will say, okay, this is, we recommend A, B, C, give it back to them, and then they ultimately decide.
All right, thank you. Okay, council member Armandares? Thank you, Mayor. Um, regarding the down payment assistance, is this for, it sounds to me like this is for home buyers versus folks trying to get into a rental unit? Is that true?
Yeah, that's.
It's solely for folks trying to buy a home?
Um, it's not in stone yet, but it is the kind of the, the nego, when we were going through negotiations and just kind of thinking of what, where these percentages were gonna go into, we thought of the down payment assistance program. It was to get families into homes.
For purchase?
For purchase.
And is, is that something that, um, the data speaks to regarding the folks in our community in Gilroy?
I mean, I think in general in the county, knowing what, um, you know, income levels are and the, how hard it is to even find a rental here, let alone a home. So we definitely, um, see a need there for that. Um, there's also, uh, rental assistance programs that we know are in the community and we are helping and supporting, um, in that sense. We're not forgetting our, our renters. We just wanna make sure that aside from what locally and state, um, funds are offering for rentals, that we also offer something for our, our folks that wanna buy a home here. And that's, or, or are forced to not be able to live here.
And that's not met by, uh, our other programs?
Uh, our down payment assistance program?
Correct.
We don't have a down payment assistance program. We, we help with, uh, we have BMR properties that we, that we help and we manage. And that's actually how we have been able to fund the housing trust fund, um, through the sales of, and the equity shares of, of those homes. Um, but this, this would be, uh, it, it would be needed in the community. I don't have the research in front of me, um, but it is something that, that we have had, uh, great interest in.
Okay, thank you. Council member Bracco.
Do we know the percentages of how much of it will actually reach the client versus administration and retirements and all that?
Uh, you mean the fee? The 5% fee?
Well, the money that they take out of this.
5%.
It's, that's, it's a straight 5%?
It's a straight 5%. Yeah, for the five years, yeah.
So to, to clarify numbers wise, this 1.39 million that we are being asked to approve, right, is for, is to be spent over five years.
Yes.
Right? And we are being asked tonight to approve the plan of 50, 20, 30.
Yes.
Right? And, and not only 50, 20, 30, but how much in year one, two, three, five? Okay, clear on that. All right. Uh, how about we go to the public and see if we have any public comments on this?
I received no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Oh, there's one. Look at who's late.
I apologize.
Hi. Yeah, just come on up, David.
I, um, this is David Cox.
Uh, good evening. It's lovely to see you. I've been kind of busy and under a rock for a while, so. Um, my only cautionary tale to the council and, uh, just wanted to say the staff here has been phenomenal. But to have county decide who they fund is challenging to me as a local organization. And I say that on behalf of the fellow organizations that are here and that apply every year. There is a deep, deep knowledge that this city has with its service providers, and I don't think we're gonna get that with the county level. I also wanna say is we have, we have three contracts right now with OSH. I think we're good with them. They know we're a reliable partner. But I think it excludes that connectivity that we need with our local council, uh, the committees that look at this, uh, funding source and things like that. To have the county decide, uh, you know, the service providers and what they might get down here, uh, to me, that's just, it's hard to decide. Cause you know, I, I think we, we, we wanna protect and we wanna, we always say, we wanna serve our constituency. We wanna make sure these agencies get funded. And I think this particular path has some risk to it.
Thank you. Okay, Crystal, do you wanna come back? Oh, Dion, do you have another question? No, okay, then I, I have one. Um, we're, we're going this route because we had a couple of meetings prior to this, right? That, uh, the housing trust fund, which was the way that we were funding, we can't anymore. The, the money that was in there isn't. So this was what council decided to do in order to do anything at all, correct?
Yes, um, in the last slide here, it is, yeah, it is a, a depleting.
Right, this is the, the reason for this route is because of the status of the housing trust fund. That back when it started in the late 90s was working beautifully and now has been pretty much depleted. So it leaves us with no way to do it.
Yeah.
Any other way.
And just to, just to know, um, oh, it's not on there. I, I think it's on the other, on the CDBG one. Um, but in the, in the February meeting, oh, here it is, it's the last point. Uh, in the, in that February meeting, um, council did, um, say they would appropriate, um, a hundred thousand.
Right, inside of a hundred.
Even, even less than the historically awarded 168. So I think, you know, there is great merit in the system that we have. It's just unfortunately, it is the, um, the funds. And, and also that is something, you know, that when, we, we don't know the end yet. Like, you know, we've, we've been given assurances and been very hopeful about our recommendations being at a, at a higher regard. And, um, only time will tell in the process.
Right. And if we can get the housing trust fund built back up again, too.
And it is a, it is a, is a five-year plan. So after that time, if we decide, oh, X, Y, and Z happened, we did like it, we didn't, then we can actually go into, continue into a PLHA.
Right.
And run it ourselves.
Okay. Jimmy, did you wanna say something before I move on?
I did wanna say something. Madam Mayor, we had significant dialogue with the county about that same concern that that gentleman shared because we don't, we didn't want the money to go into a poll when then somebody say, well, here's a little bit for you, Gilroy or not. We had to, we had to take a little bit of a risk. And the risk is, is that we could not do this program for 5% administration. We needed the county to do it for us, or, uh, we would eat a significant amount of the funds that would not go to the service providers. We also have an out. And so we have a way after the five-year agreement expires, we can decide to reevaluate and see how effective the county's been. So we're taking a little bit of chance there, but I, I feel very confident with our relationship that's been established, uh, with that department of Office of Supportive Housing and the support we've received from them. When they weren't getting any money to get, you know, to really, uh, to help us, uh, I, I'm very confident that we have a good relationship. And if it doesn't work out, we'll be back to you and, and, and tell you so. And then make some recommendations to, to adjust. But, um, we need their help in this situation.
Thank you. Okay, council member Hilton.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna commend staff for, uh, you know, for, for finding these, these resources for us. And it's only been a year since those recommendations have come out of the, the, um, ad hoc committee, you know, and one of them was to join the community plan and homelessness. So we're all pulling in the same direction. Um, you know, that gave us a seat at the table also, um, to be able to find these, these funding. So, you know, yes, endorsing the community plan and homelessness was a simple paper resolution, but it's planted the seed and it's got us this far. Um, and I just wanna say too, for those organizations, if you feel that, um, that, you know, that you're not being represented, like, like the city administrator said, come here and tell us, lean on us as the elected officials to, to, you know, to be your advocate. That's what we're here for. And I think staff's committed to be an advocate for you as well. Um, but I would be interested in hearing any and all feedback, um, on how this goes. Thank you.
Yes, definitely. Right now is, is, uh, it's the unknown because we haven't even gone, um, I mean, right here for these two years and the report that's, um, preceding this one, um, Um, we'll set the next two years, so we'll, we'll know that. We'll know what the next two years looks like. Um, could, depending on the, the options. Um, so it really is uh, the years after that, so there's some comfort in that, that, that we at least know what the next two years uh, will be like and then any um, you know, what the application process looks like, what, a, a, all that kind of process that is now outside of the city, like that's.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Armandares.
Um, thank you. Two questions. Why, um, I know staff has a lot on their plate, but I, I'm concerned that two years to establish a down payment assistance program, it seems like, like a lot. It seems like a stretch, especially given the way that housing prices are growing. You know, and um, it feels like that's gonna give us too much time for our funding to go, not to go as far. So, um, I'm concerned about that. And then, um, I'd just like to know more about what basic needs covers because I'm, I'm, I'm still not clear on what kind of services or resources that, that will provide.
That was asked already, right? You mean in addition to what was, okay?
Because it wasn't, it wasn't very clear.
Okay. You might have to get, do you have any better information or would you like to get back to her after the meeting?
Um, I can get back to her more as in examples and then you'll see also in the CDBG what we've classified as basic needs versus homeless prevention. Um, I just wanted to keep it a little separate from this because I didn't wanna talk about the grant recipients in here when that's the next one. But as far as, you know, not having the program start right away, we actually did that in deep consideration of our current service providers. Because if we did that in the first two years, that actually would not make this amount available to just our service providers. So um, again, these, those two years are homeless, homeless prevention and basic needs. We thought that was um, a way to consider, you know, the, the, the last ten or so years that, that um, you know, different things have been happening and then just to go from one year to the next. It just really felt like not even having a hundred thou- which doesn't cover it, you know, you, you'll, you'll see in the other ones. So that's one of the reasons why we decided to, one, we hadn't established, we don't have one developed yet. And then two, we wanted to make sure that our service providers, whichever option is, uh, they have those two years.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so council, does anyone want to make a motion to uh, approve this five-year expenditure plan? Or something?
I'll make the motion. I just wanna comment something as well on that is that we do have a partner called House Keys. And uh, you know, they are a partner to be able to help um, with anybody's concerns with down payment assistance. They have worked with that. Um, but I'm happy to move uh, staff's recommendation.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Hilton, seconded by Councilmember Tovar to approve the permanent local housing allocation five-year expenditure plan um, as, as recommended by staff. Okay? It's all digital voting? Alright, that's uh, passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to nine point one, approval of, approval of Community Development Block Grant and Permanent Local Housing Allocation Public Service Grant allocations and Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, before you get started, Crystal, I'd like to ask the council if there's any ex parte communications to disclose.
Mayor, um, no ex parte, but I'd like to recuse myself from this discussion and vote.
Okay, thank you. No ex parte, okay? So, Crystal, go ahead.
Where's the little, yeah, okay. Where is the full screen? Alrighty, thank you. This one's a little bit longer, but I'm gonna uh, breeze through some parts because we actually went, we just went through it with the PLHA report. Um, so just a little bit of a quick background with um, Community Development Block Grants. Um, that I'll reference as CDBG. Uh, it is, they're funds from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, uh, HUD. And uh, there are several requirements that we need to meet in order to receive CDBG funds. Um, one a, a few of them is holding two public hearings. This is the second one. It fulfills that requirement. Having a five-year consolidated plan, which is uh, uh, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five and then submitting an annual action plan. Um, a little bit more of an overview, um, we, you, CDBG uses entitlement funds and you could use a variety of activities for that. As long as it meets a national debt, uh, objective and then they have eligible activities. A few of those examples are public services, uh, meal delivery, healthcare, youth, um, and like housing rehabilitation. Again, these are just a few. I wanted to just kinda give an example. Also, as far as annual uh, CDBG allocations, uh, fifteen percent go, goes towards public service grants, which is um, what we're gonna be describing, twenty percent is the max for administrative cost and the remainder goes for CDBG eligible uses. Um, and it's estimated um, for fiscal year twenty-three that we will have four hundred and seventy thousand. So the annual action plan, um, a few things that we need to do, we need to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three annual action plan. Um, we need to have a public hearing to receive comments um, for the draft annual um, action plan that was sent out thirty days ago. And then the annual action plan um, is uh, is, is meant for specifically for the coming year. And it's referenced um, to supplant the PLHA um, consortium funding that we just uh, reviewed. Um, also part of the process is the, is that the Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, the HNRC um, was tasked with evaluating and ranking um, public service and housing rehab applications. Uh, they were giving two option, option A and option B. Um, and the HNRC did uh, choose option B at their March nineteen-ninth meeting. Um, but at this time, the, we were still speaking with the county, um, we, we didn't know if we could we could be a sub-recipient. Um, and that wasn't figured out till later on where we found out we couldn't. So what that meant is that the minimums of, that we had set beforehand for, for both CDBG and at that time HTF um, had to, had to increase. So just really quickly, um, we talked about Housing Trust Fund conversions to PLHA funds. Um, kind of already mentioned, it's, you know, we used to give a hundred and sixty-eight. Um, it is a depleting fund. The, the council did uh, only make a hundred thousand available. Um, and they also approved that staff recommendations of going into a PLHA uh, agreement. I mentioned a little bit in the, in, in the previous report that HT, it, those who were receiving HTF awards were treated just as CDBG, so the, the, and that's a, that's a HUD program. So it was rigorous, the evaluation, the monitoring, everything that we did. It didn't matter if you were CDG, CDBG or HTF. It was thorough and um, it was the same for everybody else. Um, uh, lastly, what is known is the, is the next, um, is the next two years for PLHA funds totals five hundred and ninety-two thousand. Um, and that is uh, that would be what the option that's chosen, chosen would be for the next two years. Um, quickly, we already went through this, so I'm just gonna skip this slide. It was just the timeline of the PLHA. Um, a little bit more about the consortium agreement. Again, we kinda went through this. The funding category, it's a five-year term, um, the cons- uh, the county um, is administering the funds. Uh, fifty percent homeless prevention, twenty percent basic needs, thirty percent down payment assistance. Um, and the percentage of the breakdowns would be the first, uh, year one and two would focus on homeless prevention and basic needs. And then year three and five would um, maintain homeless prevention, um, and then the down payment assistance program um, would start. Um, also the, the first two years we are, we already know are awarded and then the, the following three years are based on projections. So quickly, overview of the changes, um, Housing Trust Fund's minimums that were seventy-five hundred um, were raised with this PLHA agreement to twenty thousand. Um, also, the, the PLHA funding categories of homeless prevention and basic needs um, did have caps. Year one, it was a hundred and sixteen uh, thousand each and then year two was a hundred and eighty. Um, and also reserves uh, could be used. Um, and were made into considerations when recommendations were given for items such as a, a future safe parking program or um, other services or goods that could qualify under homeless prevention uh, or basic needs. Um, I, I did wanna take a second um, to mention that the original report that I sent out, uh, the formulas were correct, but three cells were corrupted and uh, usually if I do a formula, I don't check every single cell after that. Um, my mistake, I did have um, tables available and then I did update these tables for option B, C, and D. Um, again, HNRC only received option A and B because at that time, uh, this was not available. We didn't know minimums. We didn't know what it was really gonna look like, but HNRC was um, you know, because of HUD and CDBG on timelines. So option A, even though it's included, is not an option. It's not available because I think that, that there were still seventy-five hundred dollar minimums on there, so that didn't qualify. Um, option B uh, does qualify. Uh, this was actually the option that HNRC chose. They chose their top six ranked um, organizations. Um, and as you can see, you know, there's, for CDBG, there's a total of thirty-two uh, thousand dollars that could be used and only ten thousand dollars are used in this one. Um, only six organizations are chosen. Good thing is they got their maximum. Bad thing is everybody else didn't get any, so um, once we had new information, I did offer option C and like I mentioned, the one that was given in option C um, was incorrect. This is the updated one. Um, and I wouldn't recommend this one because of, um, on the, on the table where it actually doesn't qualify. Um, CDBG would, but um, opt, you know, the, it would be too, it's beyond the, the minimums of homeless prevention. Um, not the basic, basic needs, I think was within the range. I made a comment of that, but not the um, for option C. Yeah, option C. Yeah, so not recommended because as you see on um, versus PLHA funds, homeless prevention, it has a hundred and forty-three. So, um, I mean, i- if it was chosen, it wouldn't qualify, so. But I did wanna give an update uh, to what the numbers actually were. Um, uh, really quick, if you, so there's these two pots of funding, right? Even within PLHA, there's almost like two. But CDBG, cause I know it could be like a little confusing, there were, there's, there was only thirty-two thousand dollars available. Um, and there were new folks that, you know, you had to split it up and there were considerations we had to make. For instance, um, Bear Area Community Health, uh, due to an application error, didn't qualify, only qualified for one year. So that's why we put them in one year, which meant it was pushing everybody, um, pushing everybody's minimums. If you see adult daycare is number three, we had to give them the max because that was according to what uh, the maximum was for, for that awarded amount. So we thought, okay, well, Rise Up wouldn't get the, um, get it that year, they'd get it the next year. And then um, it would be a little bit evened out. Um, go to the next, I'll go to the next one, then we can have discussion afterwards. Um, so this is option D. This is staff recommendation. Um, homeless prevention and basic needs. Uh, by not including the, the ranked amounts, the maximum ranked amounts. Um, then it kind of made a little bit more room under those categories and the reason I put stars on the ones that were basic needs, um, oh, I didn't put the stars on the other ones. Well, the ones that are, have one star are homeless prevention. The other ones are basic needs is because there was more uh, available. So uh, we could give um, Meals on Wheels the maximum because it was, it was within that amount. But if they were in a different category, which we also had to move, the county was uh, very helpful with that. They, they gave us um, some feedback on a few that we had thought were homeless prevention and they're like, oh no, that's basic needs or this basic needs one actually could be over here, so they were really helpful um, with that. Um, and then I think on, yeah, on the bottom two, it also has the, the estimated for, for reserves for year one and year two. And it is different because the funding amount is different for, for those two years. Like one year, it's like two thirty-six and next year, it's like uh, like three sixty. So um, yeah, so tho- those are, and, and the same for the CDBG funding. We just did a little bit more even for year one and then year two, taking in consideration that, that box was uh.
Could I interrupt you just for the math? Because I'm not following. Okay, so.
With the new one, right?
The new one. If, and let's just go to option D, the new one, the one that, that you are recommending for tonight. So that we have a starting point to go from. If I add up all of the funding in year one, I get like two hundred and sixty-nine thousand? What do you get?
Um, but, but
I did it fast on my little.
The difference is, is that CDBG is its own pot of funding.
Right.
So the cells in here only add up for what would be under homeless prevention and basic needs. Not CDBG, the total, the total amount is when you do CDBG and PLHA as a whole.
Two forty-nine.
Yeah.
So all those numbers should be two forty-nine. Right? This, the sum of the year one funding column should be two forty-nine? Yeah, someone else better than I am on this stupid little calculator? I like my ten key.
Oh.
Okay. Two forty-nine, okay. So on the old, what's in our packet, the actual numbers in year fund, in year one funding are not any different. So why isn't it also? Why is it two twenty-eight there?
Let me pull up the, if you guys don't mind, I'll pull up the, the sheet. And option D.
I'm just trying to understand what, what, how, how these numbers are working. Cause I see year one funding, I see year two funding. I understand that it's broken up by PLHA versus CDBG. And then I understand it's further broken down by homeless prevention, basic needs, you know, or anything else, but how, how am I? So Jimmy, is the total of year two, also the two forty-eight, nine ninety-eight? When you do it too?
Yeah, it's just, it's because it's, it's just a few dollars, like if you see year two, it says ten six six.
Okay, so the total funds then, two forty-nine and two forty-eight for each of year one and year two. If, if we were to approve what's in option D on the revised, right, on the revised statement. And that leaves, how, how does that? That comes out leaving in reserves fifteen and one eleven because these are the numbers that we just approved in the prior agenda item for year one? Is that how it's connecting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm getting two sixty-nine also.
Yeah, that's what I get is two sixty-nine, but Jimmy just did it and said he got two forty-nine, so I was gonna just believe him.
I don't know.
The revised one.
But I'm on the revised one too.
Okay. Okay.
Forty-nine, okay, so I will look at my cell, so it's two forty-nine, it's six sixteen.
Let's everybody try. It's okay. It's, it's supposed to. The point is, it's supposed to agree to whatever the number is, so uh, math is math, whatever it is, we'll make, we'll get that corrected. I just wanted to know. No, but, but these. Yeah, this doesn't add to it. Yeah, I understand, I understand that the bottom adds. It's, it's this that's not adding.
Okay, well, if there is something wrong, this is what happened before, but this is what I use on my computer.
Okay.
Um.
Well, what I'm getting at is if, if the numbers that are here under year one funding are two sixty-nine and not two forty-nine, then they're we're going over, right? Cause that's more, that difference is more than the reserves of fifteen. That's the difference of twenty.
Yeah, they're twenty thousand off on the second column too.
You know what?
Twenty thousand more.
Oh, this little sheet. Okay.
Crystal, do we have a time commitment on when this has to be approved by council?
Um, well, HUD hasn't, I think we do because of CDVG.
Would you know the date?
What I'm getting at is, this is obviously a lot to take in.
Yeah.
And we've got some areas we need to clean up. We have a council meeting in just two weeks. I think we should come back, get this cleaned up, and go through this again with council because it's a lot to digest, I understand.
Hold on one second. Let me just, let me just look at it one more time. Total, C seventeen. Okay. PLHA basic needs.
Even if we do that, we'll still take public comment if anybody's here wanting to, to comment. But the math just isn't working as I see it.
Hold on one second.
Option C looks okay.
Boy, I think the, Mayor, I think the question that our city minister.
Okay, I, I, I'm so sorry. It was one, so I just moved it. Yeah, so, this is, it's one fifteen. It's one fifteen. See, it said six, D seven to D nine. There we go. So, it just adjusted all of them right now.
Right, so why doesn't it change the reserve amount? Something else must have changed. What else changed?
Mayor, if I can, if I can suggest, after public comment, I mean, I, I, I agree with our city administrators, a lot to take in, and I just want to make sure these numbers are accurate. If we're not on a time crunch in regards to approving this, can we bring this back two weeks from now?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. Everybody fine with that? Okay, so let's go to public comment then, and see who would like to speak on this item.
I received four speaker cards, and this is a public hearing, so the public hearing starts at seven forty-seven, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, thank you. Okay, I will open the public hearing at seven forty-seven.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have four speaker cards, and it's, the first one is Ron Kirkish, followed by Ann Peterson.
All right.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council, community. In 2012, we had an issue where a friend of mine and a former Gilroy School trustee was getting funded by the South County Collaborative. And unfortunately, he was found guilty of grand theft to degrees. I still love the gentleman. He's got a good heart, but he made a mistake. I'm not going to name his name, even though he doesn't live here anymore, his family. But the South County Collaborative was not taking care of business and watching the store with our taxpayer money. I don't know if they're doing any better today. Today, we have an issue. I saw an agency, a local agency called Caras on those graphs, C-A-R-A-S, and they're asking for money, and I believe that money is coming through the South County Collaborative. I understand that there are some potentially significant issues or problems with some of their past performance, their nine-nineties, and that, those are still questions. How are they spending our money? They're asking for what, ten thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars? Where's it going? How's it being used? Is it being double, just like my friend, were they double posting thing, or double billing? We don't know. I think we need to find out what they are doing with that money. It's not transparent, and I think we need, before we do it, and if we go forward with this, I would ask that we, within two weeks, decide whether we should pull that money from this. I don't want to, I don't want to punish other agencies like Saint Joseph's, so by not, by saying, no, we're not going to do it. But I do think we need to take Caras out and check them out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Ann Peterson, followed by Teresa Johnson.
Good evening, Ma- Mayor and Council members. My name is Ann Peterson. I'm the Executive Director of Live Oak Adult Day Services. We're one of the organizations slotted to receive the block grant funds, and I just want to be here tonight to show you our gratitude and to give you a little bit of an update. So, Live Oak has been in Gilroy for about thirty years, and you should know that it's very well-respected in the, in the whole county for providing the best of senior services for frail, dependent seniors. So, we provide a day program for folks who have dementia, and in doing that, we allow their families to get a break. We also, we can take anybody. We have a sliding fee schedule, and nobody's turned away because of lack of funds. It's a huge thing that we offer, I think, and it's really impressive that we have it here in Gilroy. It's one of, we have three other centers, but the one in Gilroy, there's no, no other one close. The next one is up in San Jose. So, it's, right now, we're, we opened in June of 2021, and we could only open to half capacity because of social distancing, which we successfully did. And we now have seven families on waitlist and hoping to be able to open more fully in the next month or so. You know, it's just a place, it's a place of joy. People come, we're doing music, dance. Today, they watched animals on TV. You know, it's just crazy stuff that we do every day, and the people that come love it. And you get people who are never, were never that social, and dementia has sort of restricted their whole life, and when they come to us over weeks of, you know, joining us, they end up being the life of the party. So, it's a hugely important thing, and I just hope that we can keep it in one of the, one of your plans up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Teresa Johnson, followed by Tim Davis.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening and for your past support for the Meals on Wheels program. My name is Teresa Johnson. I'm Director of Food and Nutrition Services at the Health Trust. We've been providing Meals on Wheels in Santa Clara County to seniors and homebound adults for over twenty-six years. I would like to briefly summarize the changes that happened in our Meals on Wheels program since the pandemic began in twenty, March 2020. A week before the shutdown, we were serving two thousand meals a week. Almost all of those were hot, home-delivered meals on a daily basis. Three weeks after the sheltering place, we were serving nine thousand meals a week. And by June, we were serving twelve thousand meals a week. It was crazy. But we're currently serving around seven thousand meals per week, and we anticipate serving about three-hundred-and-twenty thousand meals this fiscal year. We really expected the demand to decrease as vaccinations came about, and we thought the pandemic would go away. However, this has not really happened. About ninety percent of the people that came onto our service during the pandemic, they still qualify for our program. They're homebound, they're nutritionally at risk, they're elderly for the most part, and they're very, very low income. So, what we've seen is an explosion in the need of our services in our community. We anticipate serving about forty clients in Gilroy next year, and we're asking your approval to fund a portion of serving eighteen of those clients. We will serve about three thousand meals, and the funds from Gilroy would be less than half of the amount that would need to support those meals. We get the rest of the money through fundraising, grants, donations, and things like that to subsidize it. Your contribution is really critical to us because it helps us leverage funds. We can say the City of Gilroy gives us funds, and then we can, you know, get other funds to help support the program. In addition to our hot and frozen meal service, we provide wellness checks, so our clients are checked on. If there's something wrong, we can notify their emergency contact. We used over two hundred volunteer drivers last year. That counted as many as seven thousand volunteer hours. I want to leave you with this last quote from the daughter of one of our Gilroy clients. The client is eighty-seven years old and has no family close by. I can't tell you enough how much of a difference these meals make. It is so helpful to have these meals for my mother. I'm so grateful for the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker?
Last speaker is Tim Davis.
Thank you all for having me, allowing me to speak, and thank you so much for the past support for the Compassion Center. It really means a lot, and it's really nice to see all of you, not on the little screen, but here in person. The Compassion Center has been doing, serving unhoused folks since 2011, and we have been grateful to have received assistance through the CDVG and HTF funding since 2017, 2018. We faithfully met our contract obligations for all of these years. This past year, we have fulfilled ten of the eleven goals that we set for this particular year. We've also gone through every monitoring visit that we've had every year to do the oversight that this gentleman was suggesting that you should do. And what this funding is that we're asking for is for basic needs for unhoused folks, and that means food, water, hygiene, clothing, laundry, and also wraparound support, which really helps pave a pathway out of homelessness. In fact, last year, the last two years, we've averaged about a hundred people per year who have gotten out of homelessness into permanent housing. At a cost of between forty-five and sixty-five thousand dollars in public services for each unhoused individual, that's a net savings of ten times what, I'm sorry, one hundred times what this, what we're asking for funding for this grant. So, the return on investment is rather large, and we're a hard grouping, working group of five individuals that go out on a daily basis to try to meet people where they are and to also give them a pathway out of homelessness and become productive members of society. So, I would like to encourage you to vote for option D as the city had asked. And thanks again for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No other speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then, closing the public hearing at seven fifty-eight. And I think we have council consensus to move this to May fifteenth, sixteenth?
May I make a suggestion that we make a point to not officially close the public hearing, but actually continue it till the, so we can take additional comment after the resumed meeting?
Okay, so scratch that seven fifty-eight.
Thank you.
It's still open. Okay.
Mayor, sorry. I, I, I know we're, we're moving this over to our next council meeting. I had some comments or some, something to say. Should I wait until then, or can I?
Up to you. If you want to say it now, that's fine.
Okay, if I, if I may, because I'm really bothered by what was just said, slandering of one local organization in this community that does great work for the local Hispanic and people of color. I'm not personally affiliated with the organization, but I know many people who have gone through that organization, done great things for them. I would suggest, instead of focusing on one organization, that we focus on all the organizations, if that's the will of our community and our council. I mean, again, I know, and I, I want to thank all these organizations for the work that you do. I truly, truly do, and I've met with many of them. But for me, it's always been about performance-based, you know? We have large and small local organizations that, you know, we really don't know what they do, but we, we have continued to fund them because we trust and believe that they're doing good work. So, I hope the council's not going to focus in on just one organization, because it's a shame that we're talking about just one organization. If there's a conflict of interest, I, I understand that, but to, to slander an organization, for me, it's uncalled for. And again, I would recommend that individuals go and visit those organizations, know what they do, and understand what they really do to help our community. And I, I'm, I'm speaking out because I, I was really bothered by that. And I'm also bothered by organizations that we've had funded in the past that, when we request information, we don't get, and I don't see anyone talking about other organizations than just one here. So, I'll have more comments to, to, to say when we have this larger discussion, but I just wanted to share that because I think it's unfair that we're focusing on one organization and has, has done good work in our community. Thank you.
I will let everyone know, since we're, we're here and that this item's going to get continued, that I tried, I asked to see all of the financials that were submitted by all the grant applicants. And I learned that the only ones that we get financials for are the ones who haven't applied before, just the new ones. So, if you're trying to look for that, you're only going to find it for the two organizations on this list that are, that are newly applying for these funds, and they are Caras and the Boys and Girls Club of Silicon Valley. So, those were the two I looked at because they were the only two I had to look at. So, we'll go forward with that at the, at the May sixteenth meeting. Okay? All right, moving on then to item, where are we now? Item ten, unfinished business, introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy, Military Use Policy 708 pursuant to Assembly Bill 481. And Captain Powell, you are on again.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Is this on? It is green. Is that, is that better? Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm here to provide an update on Assembly Bill 481. On this slide, I have listed the steps we have thus far completed to comply with Assembly Bill 481. We have drafted a policy regarding the funding, acquisition, and use of military equipment. On March twenty-fifth, we posted the draft policy for, seven zero eight on the department's website, which was thirty days prior to a public hearing. On April fourth, we brought draft policy seven zero eight to council for discussion and direction. On April seventh, we hosted a public community engagement meeting that fell within thirty days of submitting the publicized draft policy seven zero eight. Between, between April seventh and April twenty-eighth, we drafted an ordinance adopting draft policy seven zero eight and made council suggestion, suggested addition, which was the inclusion of purchase dates for the listed equipment. Those dates can be found in Section seven zero eight point four, which is the military equipment inventory. On this slide, I have listed the remaining steps and proposed timeline to comply with Assembly Bill 481. Tonight, I'm here to introduce, and we will conduct the first reading of the ordinance adopting draft policy seven zero eight. May sixteenth, we will do the second reading and the adoption of the ordinance establishing policy seven zero eight. And beginning of May 2023, we will produce an annual report to include the use of military equipment, any complaints received, any internal audits, or violations of policy seven zero eight, and fiscal impacts. At this time, I'll be, I would like to answer any questions regarding Assembly Bill 481, draft policy seven zero eight, or the ordinance. Ty, do you, do you read the ordinance?
No, they will need to vote on reading, waving first, reading, and read by title only first.
Mayor, can I move for approval, or do we need?
Well, first, yeah. There's nobody on the board, so I'm, I'm assuming no council members have questions. So, open public comment?
I received no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. So, yeah, now if anybody wants to.
I would like, I'd like to move for a motion on, yeah, move for approval.
I'll second.
Wait, excuse me, the first motion should be to read the ordinance by title only and wave for the reading. That should be its first separate motion.
Perfect, yes.
Madam Mayor, may I ask who was the second, uh, second?
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you.
And that's a roll call vote, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Almerdarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Libra Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blinkley?
Okay, and so then the second one is a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, well, I think the clerk has to read the title now, now that we've authorized them to do that, you've authorized them to do that.
Okay.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy adopting a military equipment use policy pursuant to Assembly Bill 481.
Move for approval.
Second.
That's why I kind of hesitated the first hour.
And that's another roll call vote, right?
Thank you.
Give me one second.
Councilmember Almerdarras?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Libra Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blinkley?
Yes. Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 11, city administrators' reports. Three.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have three reports. The first is the update on Cohansi Avenue and Monterey Road, which was a council-initiated request. I have a very lengthy explanation about the history of that intersection, but I will summarize that to kind of tell you what's going on right now. We do occasionally get calls from residents wondering why the lights aren't working, why the intersection is not finished, and et cetera. The summary is that the plan that was originally approved by Union Pacific Railroad and all the entities involved had to be revised during certain things that have changed. So they are currently in the process of having Union Pacific Railroad review, revise plans and the plan at this point is to get that intersection completed at, beginning at the beginning of the year or into the early next year. Once all that work is configured, then the lights can be turned on, then the railroad crossing will be active and all those components will come together. It's just an issue right now redesigning it, getting it approved by the railroad, which does take a considerable amount of time. And none of that can, none of those lights or things can function until that's all been completed. So it's really, it's at the railroad's hands right now. Darrell's here to answer any questions as well, if you have any other questions on Cohansi and Monterey.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on that?
I have questions too. Sorry.
It was all approved. Then why didn't we get it done? I mean, it's been, what, seven years? Obviously, maybe we didn't need to do it at all. If we needed it so bad that we needed the developer to pay for it, why haven't we done it in the last seven years?
As a city manager explained, Mr. Rocco, that the first design was approved and went through the railroad, but come to find out, it was unbuildable due to some conflicts that the developer had not looked into as far as the encroachment on neighboring properties. So that had to be scrubbed and redesigned unless they were going to buy that property, which they did not. So they had to start the whole process all over again through the railroad system, which usually takes a few years.
Okay, I know I saw Councilmember Hilton raise his hand, but then the board says Almerdarras next. So you guys okay with me going by the board? Okay, Councilmember Almerdarras.
I've, I've seen or heard of at least half a dozen car accidents at that intersection in the past five years and countless near misses because I drop my kids at Christopher and they come home and it's, it's a constant, especially, you know, during morning commute hours. So I'm wondering, is there any, are there any traffic mitigation measures that we can take in the meantime?
It's a great question. There actually have been some mitigations improved there with lane striping and some different turning signage out there. One of the issues is that people are not following the signage. They're actually making turns that are illegal out there and putting people at risk. And that's hard to deter without having a police officer parked right there.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
So is, so it's staff's position right now that we're not expanding the scope anymore? Plans are done on staff's side. It's been turned to UP for approval and there is no going back to staff to expand any scope of the project? Like, that's, that's, that's a commitment? Because what I'm worried about is that as we delay and escalate scope and all that, that this might end up turning into the Cohansi Bridge where the costs all of a sudden exceeded what is reimbursable in the TIF and then we end up having to deal with that. So is that, that I can leave tonight knowing that, that that is the plan?
That is the plan. However, there is some grading issues on our side of the right of way, the city right of way, not county, that the developer's engineer is revising while we're waiting for the UPPR approval.
But that's on, that's on the developer who's, they want to get this done and moved on and, as you know, the,
And we do.
It's the same way as putting in crosswalks and intersections, like the, people are going to go where people want to go. You're not going to be able to control that. So.
Correct.
I can hear the commitment tonight unstopped. No more expanding of the scope.
Yes, we're done. We want it finished.
All right, Councilmember Marks?
So do we know what revisions that Union Pacific need to make to that intersection?
It was a very wide four-lane going through there into the county, not in the city, right across the railroad tracks, right heading into the county. That four-lane ran right through the living room of a house right there that the developer didn't do their due diligence to find out what the impacts were. So you either have to buy that property, take out that house and incur that cost, or revise your plans. They chose to revise their plans and narrow it back down to two lanes, not four, which changed the whole dynamics of the plans that were previously approved and they have to start all over through the UPPR.
Now, how, seven years has passed. So how more expensive is this project right now?
Well, the actual equipment for the railroad has been sitting in two train cars, if you drive by there, for years to be installed. It's there. Now, it may be need to be modified because we're going from four to two lanes, however, but that would be cheaper than using the current equipment. So it's already been purchased and it's there. We paid for it.
Because I have to agree with Councilmember Hilton, that's my concern, is that all of a sudden, the price is going to be way too expensive and the TIF is going to have to pay more money out and it's just. So hopefully, this is done by the, or gets started by the beginning of 2023.
That's our goal.
All right, thank you.
That's right.
Councilmember Almerdarras?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take my shot at beating a dead horse, but you know, I think, Councilmember Hilton, I think summed it up quite well in that, yeah, I mean, this thing's been going for a long time. So we just want to make sure that on our side, everything is done and squared away. That being said, and I think you hear that, you get all that. That being said, do we have any estimation as to when we might hear back from Union Pacific to try to move this thing forward?
The thoughts are it might be by the end of this year. They've already reviewed it once and the scope narrowed. But we, on our, in our world, the engineering world, we call the railroad folks the gods of the railroad because they have their own timeframe and we cannot leverage them at all. So when they get to it, they get to it. So. So mysterious are the ways that the UPPR are, okay? Absolutely correct. This is the way.
Okay, hopefully before High Speed Rail, right?
Let's see which one comes first?
We'll see. Okay, any other questions here? No? So then Jimmy, next one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Another topic that was requested by council for a report was the Sergeant Quarry, which is a project not in the city of Gilroy, but is in the county. And the discussion was a consideration for the council to take a position. We're going to ask council to hold off on that agenda item as the county has not yet released the environmental impact report. So it would be a bit premature for council to, to go through that. But once we have that EIR, we have an opportunity to look at it, to give you some information and to perhaps make a recommendation. We'll bring it back before the comment period is up and the EIR is finalized.
Okay, any questions there? All right, then, next one.
Okay, and then lastly, I did receive some concerns from businesses that are downtown concerning some of the suspension of enforcement sections of the Gilroy City Code that most of it pertains to parklets and outdoor dining. And those were expect, those were set to expire at the end of May. We will have an agenda item on May 16th requesting the council extend those to give us a little bit more time to come up with a permanent policy or ordinance or whatever. So that way, this won't be an annual thing. It'll be something that is more legislatively supported. As you know, for most downtowns you've visited, outdoor dining is a way of life now and most communities are either maintaining it or expanding it and probably not regressing on that practice that occurred during COVID. So you should have something here on your 16th, at least to continue the current practice. So we won't be going out there telling the businesses to take down their outdoor dining.
All right, Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Madam Blinkley. So Jimmy, is, it would have been the plan to, you said, not continue it every year on its own item. Would this be brought back based on our, how we go on the 16th into our zoning code amendments? Like, since that's coming back soon, is that where it would get rolled into?
I'm gonna phone a friend. Community Development Director, John Biggs, who is good at this.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I don't necessarily think it would be a zoning code amendment. I think we would look at it as its own policy, separate from the zoning codes. It would probably be the best way to approach it, probably by resolution rather than a resolution adopting a set of policies rather than a code just because it gives us some flexibility in the future to swiftly react to changes in the market conditions in the downtown.
I think cities all over the state have tried to avoid making it zoning.
Yes.
Because it gets very complicated and difficult when you do that.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right then, thank you, Jimmy. Okay, city attorneys' reports. Andy?
All right, yeah, I'd like to give a brief report on a case that came out today. It's the very one that Mr. Kirkish mentioned. And it's a Supreme Court case you may have heard about, about flags, flying flags from city flagpoles. And because we have a policy related to that, it is relevant to what the city does. This case had been awaited and generally assumed it would come out the way it did. It's called Shirt Left versus City of Boston. Boston had, has a city hall with a big park out in front and the park is incontrovertibly a public forum. People show up to the park, they can say and do anything. They have three flagpoles. They fly an American flag, a state flag, and a city flag. But the city flag, flagpole, they allow people who are holding festivities in the park to request to fly a temporary flag for a few hours on the third flagpole. So for 12 years, Boston had approved every request, hundreds of them. And the only one they turned down was Shirt Left, the plaintiff, because he wanted to fly a religious flag. And there was no written policy, which is really kind of bizarre. And Boston felt somehow, somebody in the staff felt that they would be violating the Establishment of Religion Clause, which is the one that says that a state shall not establish religion, as opposed to a state shall not discriminate against religion. And the court said, well, that's not really the issue. You have created a public forum because you've never turned down a request except this one. And if you've created a public forum, then you cannot discriminate against people based on the content of their speech. And particularly, you can't discriminate because someone wants to say something religiously based or fly a flag that has religious connotations. We knew this case was coming along at the Supreme Court when we, when we worked on the Gilroy Policy for Commemorative Flags that you adopted three months ago. We believe our policy is okay because we made efforts not to create a public forum. We do have a written policy. We do not allow certain categories of speech because the city determines by adopting the policy that we as the city do not wish to express our opinions on certain subjects, including politics, religion, commercial speech, and including offensive or discriminatory speech. So certain kinds of flags are banned, but that's not a discrimination against any particular group. It's pursuant to a written policy and every request will come to the council for discretionary action. So we don't think the, this policy affects our ability to enforce the commemorative flag policy. We knew this case was coming out. We expected it to come out the way it did. And although ultimately it was kind of a simple case, but there were a whole bunch of opinions where the justices fight with each other about how to analyze it. Everybody's interested in the minutia of analyzing First Amendment things. I commit this case to you. It's interesting to read, but the net result was pretty clear. They had created a public forum. We have worried about that with the city's website also. We worried about that with banners on First Street a few years ago. All these issues arise. The social media policy that we adopted carefully avoids establishing a public forum as well because once you do establish a public forum, you can't censor it. Anyway, that concludes my report. If there's any questions?
Anybody question? All right, thank you. Okay.
Shall I announce the closed session?
Please.
Next item, 13.1, Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 and Gilroy City Code Section 17A8A2. The property is 145th Street. Negotiators are Jimmy Formis and Karmine Decker. The other party to negotiations is Advantage Peak LLC, under negotiations price and terms of lease. We should take public comment and then we do not have to vote to go into closed session, but once we go into closed session, we have to vote to remain in closed session and that is a reportable action.
All right, I'd like to open public comment if we have any.
I receive no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
All right, then closing public comment. And how about we come back at, do you guys want to come back at 8:30 or sooner? Okay, so yeah, I'm with, I'm with you all. So come back as soon as you can.